I'd like to call this meeting the Clay County Commission to Order. We will begin this evening's meeting with invocation from Reverend Phil Apling. If you would come forward and give us our blessing, and I will tell Reverend this as well as everyone else, when you come up to speak, please make sure that you push the button and that the collar or the microphone is green. Speak clearly into the microphone, identify yourself, and then go forward with that, Reverend. It's your...
Let us pray. O mighty God, Creator of all life and the Architect of the universe, in humility we recognize even the founders of this country acknowledged that we are dependent on the grace and guidance of providence, that unseen hand that has guided all of humanity from ages past. We acknowledge our responsibilities to this great land, our country, our state, and this county we call home, to do our very best as stewards of all that you have given us as a free people. We ask your providential guidance this night in the matters of this body, that what is said and what is decided will be pleasing in your sight and a reflection of our best efforts for the people of this county. Consider, Lord God, our limitations of wisdom and knowledge, and in your grace and goodness, inspire not only noble deeds and decisions, but fill our hearts with the spirit needed, that all of the work of this body and all of the deliberations that must take place will be accomplished with charity and graciousness. This we pray to the honor and glory of your name. Amen.
Thank you. Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Nolte.
Here.
Commissioner Willington.
Here.
Commissioner Lawson.
Here.
Commissioner Wagner.
Here.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Here.
Commissioner Thompson.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
That brings us to approval of this evening's agenda. Is there a motion related to approval of the agenda?
I move to approve tonight's agenda.
Motion has been made for the approval of this evening's agenda as published. Is there any discussion? Commissioner Lawson?
Yes, I would like to change item seven, Senate Bill 190, to after the public comments, seven, if we could, please.
Very well. Mr. Counselor, are we going to need to do that in a form of a motion? There's at least one other change, or do we want to roll them into one?
I do.
Very well. Also, it's my understanding, Administrator, that we have another change on our agenda?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner. Staff would like to withdraw 2023-325, which is approving an application for group insurance with standard insurance. We'd like to bring this back before the commission next week, so we'd like that pulled this evening, please.
Just for the sake of getting it through, Commissioner Lawson, is it okay if we just roll both those into one motion and just have you make that motion?
I need to make a motion?
We would roll that into yours. I don't know that we really need to, but...
What?
To remove the other agenda, so we just have one vote?
I can do it if you want.
Okay, go right ahead.
I move to adjust tonight's agenda to show item number 10, discussion items moved to the item after public comments and the removal of 2023-325 from the regular agenda.
Motion's been made to alter our agenda as just outlined. Discussion? Commissioner Johnson?
I just want to clarify so everybody understands what's going on. We're moving this discussion item for Senate Bill 190 up several places so that the people that are here in the audience can be heard and hear this sooner than later and probably get home in time for the football game.
Yes, I believe that's in with Commissioner Lawson's intent.
Yeah, that's what I'm doing.
Further questions or discussion? Seeing none, you're recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wagner.
Hi.
Commissioner Willington.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson.
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
That brings us to ceremonial matters. I believe we have one item under that heading. Administrator?
Yes, I believe Commissioner Lawson has presented a resolution really of support for the individuals in Israel and certainly supporting peace in that area of the world. And I would defer to her to add any other comments.
Commissioner Lawson, you're recognized.
Thank you very much. Before I do this, I just want to say thank you, Diana. Thank you, Brandy, for getting this all written up for me. One quick thing, if I may. Years ago, as a teenager, I had talked to my dad, who had been in the Second World War and was one of the soldiers that came through Germany and saw firsthand the atrocities. And my dad was a gorilla, and he was tough as a boot, and it was the first time I saw my father cry. It just was so impactful on me, and he explained what the people looked like and how horrible the condition they were in and all of that. It kind of stuck with me, and it has continued to, as we hear things that go on, any kind of prejudice of any nature, whether it's for the Jewish community or anybody, is unforgivable. This particular attack was brutal, and so I just wanted to do this just kind of as a remembrance to what these people have been through and whether it's here or anyplace else. This isn't a Clay County issue, it's a humanity issue, and so I wanted to go ahead and do this, so with your indulgence. Whereas Clay County is standing with Israel as it defends itself against the barbaric war launched by Hamas and other terrorists, and whereas on October the 7th, Hamas terrorists launched a massive unprovoked war on Israel by air, land, and sea, including firing thousands of rockets, and whereas Hamas terrorists crossed the land border and began slaughtering Israelis, abducting hostages in towns in southern Israel, including children and the elderly, and whereas since November the 7th, Hamas has launched over 4,500 rockets into southern and central Israel, and whereas since October the 7th, 2023, Hamas terrorists, October the 7th, 2023, Hamas terrorists have killed over 900 Israelis and injured more than 2,600 others. And whereas at least 11, now up to 26, United States citizens in Israel among those killed by Hamas since October the 7th of 2023. Now therefore be it resolved that the Clay County Board of Commissioners and citizens do hereby support Israel and pray for peace. And our governor also issued a statement of this nature, our governor of Missouri. So with that, thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Lawson. Any further discussion? Commissioner Carpenter?
Yeah, I just wanted to suggest, and you updated the numbers, what I've seen most recently is 27 at least Americans dead and at least 1,200 Israelis died in the terrorist attack, and so to the extent that we can update the numbers in the resolution, I think that might be a good thing to do. Just want to join you in limiting the terrible terrorist attacks that took place and the loss of life. A lot of atrocities took place, and there's no excuse for it. Obviously, it's a complicated situation in that area and has been for centuries, and it's my sincere hope that at some point humanity finds a way to move in a real peaceful direction there and across the world and move on from these kinds of despicable acts.
Thank you.
I certainly share the sentiments that Commissioner Carpenter, Commissioner Lawson have just expressed. What we're doing here this evening with this particular action is highly unusual. It's not something we do all the time, and it's not something I expect us to be doing on a regular basis, but I think we're looking at a situation that is unfortunately of historic proportions. So this is and should be an unusual step, and that's what makes this, I think, particularly important is because it is out of the ordinary, because the circumstances are so out of the ordinary that it requires something outside of our usual way of conducting business here that I think it is appropriate in this particular case. With that, is there any further comments? We will move on to public comments. Did we need, we didn't need to vote on that because it's, yeah, okay. You were looking at me like I may have forgotten something. All right, very good. So this is the point where anybody from the public can come up to make comments of any sort that they would wish. It would be great to keep them brief, but please, we do want to hear your opinions. A couple of things, as I just mentioned when the Reverend came up, if you would like to make a comment on a subject of importance to you, if you could queue up, if a number of you want to speak so that we have a line, make sure the light is on on the stem of the microphone, state your name, and speak clearly into the microphone. One of the things that I do want to make mention of is this, we are obviously bound by sunshine law here as elected officials. We do want to hear your views, but because this is not a subject that has been noticed up under the Missouri sunshine law, we cannot necessarily respond to you right now at this moment. I can tell you that all of us are very interested in hearing what people have to say and continuing the conversation. It's just in this particular circumstance, we are not able to carry on a discussion in this particular format this moment. So I didn't want you to think that it reflected a lack of interest or concern on the part of any of the members of this commission, and perhaps in the future, this will be put on the agenda so that we can have a more interactive discussion on this matter, but I did want to make sure that you understood the circumstances of how we proceed. With that, if there are any citizens who would like to come forward and make a comment of interest to them, please feel free to do so. Just come up to the podium here.
My name is Lee Mullenix. I live in the northern part of Clay County. Been up there for 30 years, built a new house up there a few years back. The roads going to my house off of 133 Highway, which is 184th Street, Lancaster, and 190th Street, since I've been up there, have not been a good road at all, period. They have come out and tried to fix it, but lack of knowledge or whatever it is, they have not fixed that road. They come back, they try to patch it, the road is beyond patching to repair, and my question, which I'm not going to get answered tonight, which is okay, they asphalt paved a couple of years ago all of the roads on the west side of 33 Highway, 184th Street, down all through Carriage, they went right down Lancaster to 190th Street, went across the bridge on I-35, and they asphalt paved everything next to Elsia Springs. My question is, is why? Why didn't they do that road too? Well, that road is atrocious. If anybody would like to go up and drive down that road, I would advise you to do it. We'd like to have something done to this road other than trying to patch it because it's, patching it is not feasible. It needs to be asphalt paved like the rest of them got done, and I'd like to know why it didn't to start with. So that's my complaint, is the roads. Who is Carl?
This is not a discussion, so I think I say, Carl is our deputy administrator in charge of highways and roads.
Okay. And then Terry is under him?
Yes.
Okay. Is either one of them here tonight?
Oh, yes, but once again, you know, we as elected officials...
No, I understand. I just want to know who he is.
She.
I've talked to Terry before. I've never talked to Carl.
Terry is a female, is a lady.
Okay. All right. Well, okay, thank you.
Administrator, do you have something you want to add?
I'd just like to say, I spoke to Mr. Mullenix earlier today. We have his contact information, so we don't have his answers today, but he did express his concerns to me, and staff will be in touch to give you some of those answers that you've asked this evening.
Okay, and I appreciate that. And I'd also, I'd also like to say to all the people that I brought with me, voice your opinion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else wish to come forward and express an opinion or a view?
My name is Alex Blakely. I live on Lancaster. When we bought 10 years ago, we bought in Clay County, one for the schools, but two is I didn't want to live on gravel, and we could have bought and bought a lot more for a lot less and paid a lot less taxes if I would have moved up into Clinton County because we are right there on that border. And, yeah, the road has always been bad. They redid the chip and seal once, and it was gravel for months, and I made a complaint then of like, I didn't pay, I don't pay this much to live on gravel. This was done on purpose. So, yeah, I would appreciate it if our roads got addressed because the potholes are terrible. You just, you play dodgeball going up the road every day trying to stay out of those potholes, and I know people have had tire issues from them as well, because if you just, you forget it's there and you hit it, you're going to know it. So I know there's a lot of people getting car damage from it, so I appreciate your time.
Stock Road is on the east side of I-35. It runs from PP all the way down to Boggs Farm. They just chipped and sealed it. Now, I don't know if the county chipped and sealed it or if they had a contractor chip and seal it, but it's a terrible, terrible job. They went south of 190th, all the way down, and there's four houses on that road down to Boggs Farm. I live on West Outer Road, which is all gravel. Well, if they can chip and seal the road that's basically due east of me, why can't they do something with my road? We've had issues, culvert issues, other things, had to call the county three or four times to get them to come out and grade the road. It was getting in bad shape. I'd like somebody to look into that, basically just drive down Stock Road and see what a terrible job was done, and I sure hope when you repair 190th, Lancaster, and 184th, you just don't come out and chip and seal it and walk away because there's a heavy volume of traffic on there. That's all I have to say.
Administrator?
Sure. My name is Martin Schmelz. I live on West Outer Road, 18510 West Outer Road.
Just one, I think something I'd like to say is Administrator, you seem to be gathering names and contact information, so when you get up to speak, if you would like to be on that list of people contacting, please make sure that you talk to the Administrator and give them your information. Commissioner Johnson?
Thanks, sir. Marty, have you talked with anybody from our highway department yet about this?
I'm sorry, Commissioner, we can't engage...
Yes, we can. This is not a sunshine violation.
Hold on.
Commissioner, excuse me, Counselor, what is your call on this?
Sunshine law prohibits...
Oh, you use your mic.
If it's not on our agenda, we're not supposed to be talking about something or it would be a violation of the sunshine law.
Yeah, I mean, I tried to stay on the right side of it by just giving factual information.
So we've got a meeting posted with topics.
Right.
We can talk about those topics because that's, but to have a substantive discussion of something not on that...
Right, we're not having a substantive discussion. I'm just curious if he's talked to our highway department?
Sure.
That's all.
No, I've called the maintenance department numerous times, county maintenance for roads, but that's as far as I've gone with it.
Okay. And how many people are here because of their roads? Okay, this is ridiculous that these many people have to come to a commission meeting to talk about this. This should be, someone from the highway department should be meeting with these people and taking care of these problems. I don't fix roads. The highway department does that, and there's a problem if this many people are coming to the commission to talk about their roads. In my opinion, there's probably just some miscommunication going on. There has to be some better communication with our citizens of what's going on, why their roads aren't done, or when they're going to be done, or those kind of things, and I wonder if there'd be an opportunity for either Terry, or I know Carl I think is off, but for Terry or someone from my highway department to sit down with these good folks and just say, hey, listen, this is where we're at with these things. This is what we're going to do, this is our schedule, this is we're going to get to yours and when are we going to get it done? I mean, Administrator, can you comment on that at all?
Commissioner, I think we are getting into a substantive discussion. Now, I think what, to me, the idea would be to notify, notice it up for our next meeting and to have this discussion. I think it's a good discussion to have, but there are laws that we are bound by. Now, citizens are not bound by, by the way, you are not bound by sunshine law, we are bound by sunshine law.
Understood. Thank you for your time. Appreciate if you'd look into it.
Commissioner, I'm sorry, Commissioner Johnson, you did, while I was trying to express that, you still have the floor, so if you, did you want to speak any?
No, it sounds like the County Administrator is going to handle this for me, but I will make a point here, clarification. I would like to see the law that says we cannot respond to citizens when they ask us a question.
It's...
I've read the sunshine, and if you can point it out to me, I'd love to see it.
Once again, I have to depend on County Council. Mr. Counselor?
In my view, my reading of the law is if we have a substantive discussion of something that hasn't been noticed up for the public, it's a violation, because the public has an opportunity or has the right to know when public business is going to be discussed. And so if we want to have a discussion about 189th Street, excuse me, 184th Street, that's certainly appropriate, it just should be published so that the public has awareness of it.
Great, please. If you want to inquire of the council, please go right ahead. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't realize it went off. There you go.
So my understanding is it needs to be reasonable for us to notice it. There would be certain things that we don't get a notice, that we can't notice. We certainly can't notice when somebody comes up here at the last minute and asks a question. Now, if I wasn't sitting up here and I was down there and they were asking me the question, I could answer it, but to say that because I'm sitting up here I can't answer it, that's ridiculous. The sunshine law just makes, tells us we have to have reasonable notice, and there's nowhere in the sunshine law, and I'm not trying to challenge our Counselor on this, but this is a discussion we need to have. There's no, because it frustrates me, I've seen it other places too, where people, citizens, come up to the podium and ask a simple question, and we hide behind the sunshine law that we can't answer a question. No, we can. We're responsible for this county, we're responsible for these potholes. If they have a question, we need to be able to explain why they haven't been filled or where to go to get those answers. And I'm not even having a full discussion, I'm just saying, hey, we need to have our highway department talk to these people and take care of these problems. That's not a discussion, that's just some direction. But there's nowhere in the sunshine law that says we cannot answer a question, or we can't even have a discussion with someone who comes to the podium. It's just not, it doesn't clearly say that essentially. If it does, I would love to see that, because it makes our job a lot easier if we don't have to answer questions of anybody, but I don't think that's why we're here. And it just frustrates me, if I was on the other side and I took time out to come to a meeting on a Thursday night to ask a question of my commission, because nobody else can get the job done, I have to go all the way to the commission to say, hey, can someone fill my potholes, and for them to say, sorry, sunshine law, I can answer a question, that's ridiculous. That's not what government's about, but that's my two cents.
Commissioner Willington, I believe you are seeking recognition?
Yeah, so I think, Diana, I mean, there's 30 people here that want to have a conversation about roads. I've been a broken record on our roads. Our roads are an embarrassment. The highway department needs to step their game up and do a better job. I've been a broken record also on asking for a 10-year road plan. This is exactly why. We should be able to tell these folks when their road's going to be upgraded and improved. I think we need to have a serious conversation, and I'm going to renew my request that a 10-year road plan be submitted with this year's capital budget request from the highway department.
Commissioner, once again, we are, this is a time for...
That's fine, Jerry. I said what I want to say, so it's fine.
Excuse, yes, well, I try not to interrupt you because I'm trying to give you some...
It's okay, Jerry. It's okay. I'm the... Call the way...
May I now speak? Thank you. What I'm trying to say is, first off, this is a time for public discussion. We sitting up here are not public. This is a time for them to express their views. We should engage in a discussion, and there is a lawful and a prescribed way for us to do it.
I said we were going to have a discussion. I was simply responding to what she said.
I can't answer for what conversation you may have had outside of my presence.
She said you could have a conversation about roads in the next week or something, so I was just...
That's right, so...
I was just arguing what she said.
In the next week or so? Yes, that would be absolutely fine. Commissioner Lawson?
I don't, I don't want to get into a big fight. The only thing I wanted to say was that since April, I have been trying to get that road fixed. Mr. Mullenix and I have talked more than my husband and me have talked, but the, and I would ask, I would get promises made, and...
But once again...
Bottom line is, yes, we need to get this squared away.
This...
And if, I would like to ask our Counselor that he do a little bit of research on this issue and see if there's a loophole or something that in the future, when people make the time to come down here, that we're, and I see where you're coming from, Jerry. time to come down here, that we're, and I see where you're coming from, Jerry, I, you're, I know you're right, as the way this is set up. But we need to make sure, dead certain sure, that with, with the new government that we have, whatever, that there isn't a way that we can work around that and be able to address people's issues when they take the time to come down.
And the method for doing that is for us to notice it up under discussion. Otherwise, one of the reasons for this law to be in place is so that other commissioners are not blindsided. And so, the public is not blindsided.
I understand.
Um, it is one thing if we disagree with the law, that's fine, but we are, but we are, but we are bound by the law.
I understand that.
And, um, and so, I'm going to ask commissioners to please stay in compliance with sunshine law.
And Commissioner?
Please, yes, counselor.
May I, the question's been asked, so I'll, I'll just read from 610020.020.
Could you go a little more near your microphone there? Thank you.
All public governmental bodies shall give notice of the time, date, and place of each meeting and its tentative agenda. And here's the, what I believe to be the relevant part. In a manner reasonably calculated to advise the public of the matters to be considered. And that's the real goal of the sunshine law, is that public business happens and the public gets to know when that happens. As opposed to, you know, people, you know, people show up and just have a, a free-for-all discussion, but the rest of the public, who might want to have input into that discussion, have no opportunity to, to be put on notice of that discussion. So, that's how we've always done it. That's why, that's, I think, a fair reading of the statute and the sunshine law.
Uh, thank you. Because there have been a number of issues, uh, times before this body, not this particular iteration of the body, where we have had issues come up out of the blue and discussed in violation. And that is not fair to the public or other commissioners. There is obviously time later on our agenda when it comes to comments for commissioners. Those comments would then be in order. But once again, I would ask commissioners to, to stay in compliance with state statute. You may proceed.
Thank you, and thank you all for considering this topic. My name's Christina Drucker. I also live on 190th Street. Um, I will say in regards to talking about when potholes can get filled, there were actually people there today filling some, but it, while I also am not a road person, it's quite laughable how they were getting fixed. Um, but I work from home, so I can see all the traffic that goes by and I could watch them, and it was just, you know, shriveling asphalt out, maybe spreading it a little bit, but no tamping it down or anything. So, I mean, hopefully that's something that, with discussions with the highway department, if that's the directions it needs to go, that could also be addressed as if the people doing the work are trained properly. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to come up and make a comment?
Hi, my name's Zach Lowenstein. I live on 190th Street. Uh, first off, I appreciate those of you who share some concern. Um, I understand you guys have procedures to follow, but definitely appreciate you guys, I mean, you guys are elected officials, so, um, appreciate you guys hearing us. I can't say too much that hasn't been said already. Um, the road's pretty laughable, it needs attention. We pay a lot of taxes in this county. Um, I think somebody else mentioned, we could go live somewhere else for a heck of a lot less, but we've all chose Clay County, um, so we'd appreciate you guys giving some attention to this. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else would like to come forward and make a comment?
I live on West Outer Road, and it is gravel, and it's, I believe it's pretty dangerous when you, when they re-gravel the road, they put dust on it. And when you're driving down, it's right next to 35, and all that bl- dust blows over to 35, and you see the traffic on the highway slowing down, and that causes for danger. So, I do, I'd like to see that get chipped and sealed, um, just for that alone, uh, not to mention, it's, it's time to update the road there on, uh, West Outer Road. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm Derek Wether. I'm RZR.
Anyone else like to comment? Very well. Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm going to talk property taxes.
You cer, you can come up and talk about any issue you want. On the, as, as far as the property tax issue goes, we're going to be taking that up next, so if you would like to make comment at that time. You're talking about the Senate Bill 190?
Yes.
That will be our next item, so that would, you can, either one you care to comment on would be fine. We can respond to you on the, on the other, on the 190. Further discussion, or excuse me, further comments from the public. Okay, seeing none. That brings us to our discussion item as we did alter our, um, order of, of our agenda. Administrator?
Um, yes, thank you. So, um, there has been a lot of discussion, um, at the commission level and also, um, a committee that's been put together that, um, has been facilitated by Commissioner Lawson. And so, um, the request was to have this on the agenda for the commission to discuss and give an update on what the committee was, um, progressing, and I believe there's sort of a draft ordinance, um, to kind of as a stock, uh, starting point for discussion purposes. There was also in your packet a letter, um, because one of the things, and I don't mean take your thunder, but one of the things the committee had talked about was the commission considering a letter to be sent to all the legislators from Clay County, uh, in Jefferson City about some items that possibly they might take up for clarification during this next session, starting in the January of 2024. Um, so we have that there also that the commission may want to talk about and discuss and see if that's an action that you wanted to do. And so, with that, I would turn it over to Commissioner Lawson, um, to maybe give an update on the committee and, and what discussion you want to have.
Commissioner Lawson, if you'd like to start the discussion?
Okay, thank you very much. Um, just wanted to say that, uh, for the citizens especially that are here, um, we have been working on this bill since before the governor actually signed it. And we formed a committee, and I, just so that you know how involved everyone was, we had myself, uh, we had Commissioner Nolte and, uh, Commissioner Johnson, because we can only have three commissioners in a room together without breaking the sunshine law. I think otherwise, everybody would have been involved, but we had those three individuals that were working on it, along with, uh, we had our, our assessor, we had our auditor, we had the assessor's lawyer, um, that, uh, Mr. Lucas Wallingford, Wallingford, yeah. Uh, we had our collector, Barbara O'Reilly. We had her second-in-command, Randy McIntosh, who was, is it Brilliant? Uh, we had treasurer Bob Nance, our administrator, Diana Wright, and our counselor, uh, Kevin Graham. So, it was a, uh, I hate to put that in my own words, but it was a really intelligent group. And, uh, uh, we really went after this to make it as good as we possibly could for the citizens. Um, the bill was a little, um, wonky in, in the aspect that there were some, uh, some language that wasn't as clear as it could have been. And this is what Diana is talking about. We're trying to get those individuals at, uh, Jefferson City to look at some of those gray areas, make them exact, so then we can go ahead and get this enforced. Um, last week, Jay Johnson made a great suggestion, and he asked that our auditor go ahead and formulate this ordinance for us. And so, he did, and he did it in one day. Uh, Commissioner, uh, Commissioner Withington jokingly said to him, well, can you have that ready by tomorrow? And he did. He had it ready the next day. Everybody here has had it, uh, in their possession for a while. So, kind of what I'd like to see us do is to talk a little bit about the bill, areas that you have concerns about, that we need to let, uh, our staff know so we can make the changes. And then further, it helps Jerry when he goes to Jeff City to clarify everything with the people there. So, um, I'm going to, uh, step back and anybody that wants to, uh, bring that forward, then let's do it and get it discussed.
Commissioner, just, and go instead, leave your mic on, please. Um, could you just go through some of the high points? Because not everyone has a copy of it in front of them.
Oh, okay.
So, if you could kind of go through the, the, the points, then we'll go, I think then everybody will be able to hear more.
That's a great idea. That's why you're presiding. Um, one of the, the main things, uh, and this is the key, you're 62, and in the bill it says social security eligible. Now, does that mean you take social security or you could if you wanted? That's one of the gray areas. But the key is 62. Um, you own your home, it is your primary residence. Those are key issues, because some folks may have a home, that, you know, a vacation home or something of that nature. Doesn't count. It's your primary residence. So, those are some of the key issues. Uh, something I do want to mention, I'm glad you gave me another moment. Um, Commissioner Nolte and our auditor, uh, and myself met with the school districts, and we met with all the school districts at one time. We had Smithville and Carney and North KC and Lawson and, I don't know...
Excelsior.
Excelsior. We had all of them there together. And we went over, uh, the bill, and we also went over how little it will impact the school districts, because that's something we think about too. We, we don't want to do anything to harm the education, but, uh, we also feel that people that have paid their taxes all their life deserve a break. So, um, we did give them the, the bottom-line information. They had some questions, but all in all, I felt is though, they were fairly, uh, willing to work with us on the, on the bill. So, that, that made me feel a lot better. Uh, but that's the high point. You've got to be 62, and you've got to become 62 in the year that this all takes place. So, you can't be 59 and say, well, I'm going to be 62. You've got to be 62 in that year. So, anyway, with that, uh, go ahead.
Commissioner Withington, I believe you sought recognition?
Uh, yeah, maybe Commissioner Johnson or Lawson or staff. Have we, have we figured out the, uh, the, oh, the collector was going to have to get some kind of new software? Has, have the vendors done their update?
So, staff has been in conversation with our current software vendor and what it would take, because this does take a lot of change and calculation and making sure we get it correct. Um, we have also been interviewing other software vendors, um, to see what products are out there and what's available. So, those discussions are going on. We know, um, there may or may not be a cost with this, it depends. Our current vendor is looking at that. Um, because it is legislative-driven, they may be required under our contract to make the necessary changes without a fee.
Okay.
Or not, we don't know. So, there's still lots of conversations that are going on, but yes, we are pursuing that.
Okay. Also, section 3806, section C says, "Property Tax Credit. An eligible taxpayer is authorized to receive a property tax credit upon the submission and approval of an annual application by eligible taxpayer." Why are we asking the taxpayers to do an annual application when they're not getting any younger?
Um, so, well, some people might like to be getting younger. Um, so, the thought process on that is, the first application will be a very thorough application to, um, ensure eligibility, right? But we are going to ask that there is an annual renewal, because in essence, what an annual renewal will be, will be an affidavit that I am a senior, I'm swearing, that is still my primary residence.
So, it's not going to be...
I haven't gone to live with my sister in California and I've moved my kids in. So, they're really going to be certifying and notarizing. I still live there, you know, it's still my primary residence. So, the renewal will be much easier and simpler on the applicant than the initial application.
Okay. And so, Commissioner Lawson and Johnson, do you guys feel that we are at a place where we could pass this, this, this year?
Yes.
Pass it tonight? Okay. Well, because I'm in favor of this. I think, I'd like to see it get done sooner rather than later. I know we've, you guys have put a lot of work into this, so, um, you know, I, I'd like to move forward with this, and my, my proposal would be, or, you know, my, I know this is just a discussion, but would be to get this on next week's agenda for appro- that's where I'm at.
Um, hold on a second. There you are, Commissioner.
All right, thank you, sir. Uh, yeah, so this was kind of a, a, a draft, and I don't think it's been through the whole, uh, committee yet, um, and I don't know if it's been vetted completely by legal yet, so...
Or staff.
If it's ready for game time yet, but, um, I, I think it's a good product to start with, and I think we can, we can expedite getting it through those things, through the committee, just to... So, what we're, what I think we need to do is look for loopholes. Uh, what are some things that, that, number one, we'll keep this strong legally, so hoping the legal challenges, but also, okay, there's people out there that are going to find loopholes in this, going to find some way to either challenge this or to, or to make a mockery of it. So, by, by having some more eyes have a look at this, and some experts have a look at this, we can maybe fine tune a little more if we need to, and then bring it back, is, is what I would think we would do, uh, for, as soon as we could, for, for approval from this body.
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to make sure we can get this done, uh, you know, by the end of the year, because I know, you know, SB 190 says it takes effect January 1/24, so I'd like to, I'd like to get this done by the end of the year.
Uh, by the way, I'd like to point out that, um, I've had discussions with a number of people from the legislature, including the, the bill sponsor, uh, and there will be, uh, certainly, uh, efforts made to alter this. While I do think we should be moving ahead reasonably quickly, I think we need to make sure also that we are taking into account of what those changes may be, and we may well have to end up rewriting this, depending on what those changes are. The principle being, uh, what Commissioner Lawson had, had outlined, and that is the age 62. The law, in fact, um, as written, talks about, uh, social security eligibility, and one of the things that obviously we've, we've talked about, not just within the task force, but in the body as a whole, is that, uh, not everybody is social security eligible. Uh, under the way the statute is written, uh, it could certainly be easily construed to not include retired teachers, to not include retired railway workers. We need to have clarification, and we need to make sure that, that everybody is included, uh, and they're not excluded by virtue of the fact that they, uh, engaged in one of those two professions and therefore might not be eligible. So, we definitely need to be, to have clarification. So, while I think moving ahead as quickly as possible is important, I think we cannot be, uh, we cannot ignore the fact that there will be change. The only thing that will not, that, the only reason it would not change next year is if, uh, the legislature was unable to reach that level of functionality, I guess is one way to put it. But it is absolutely the intention of the sponsor to make that 62 not social security eligible, uh, that changes things. That changes things dramatically. So, I think we need to be working, as we have been, with our delegation to Jefferson City to not only implement those changes that we believe should be made, but also to make sure that what we write is going to be in compliance, because it's important that we are in compliance with the, um, with the law as passed.
Can I, can I finish now, Jerry? I wasn't, I wasn't done.
Well, you certainly may, yeah.
So, all right, so that helps, Jay, because, um, I would like to see us pass this by the end of the year. You know, we've been a county for 200 years. This wouldn't be the first time that we've passed something and had to make an amendment to it. So, I would like to see us pass it as the law currently states, and then if the legislature makes any changes, Commissioner Lawson, Commissioner Johnson, uh, you know, then we can come back and we can make some amendments and change it as needed, so.
May I, can I inquire of you, Commissioner Withington? Because you said you wanted to pass it so it is compliant with the state statute.
So, I said I want to...
Are you saying not doing the 62-year-old, uh...
So, I want to pass what we have, 62, and then if there's any changes that we need to make, we can come back and amend it. So, I like, I'd like what we have right here, and then we can make any changes, if the legislature makes any changes, we can make changes then. So, that's where I'm at.
Commissioner, excuse me, Commissioner Wagner, I believe you are up the queue next then. Commissioner Lawson, hold on a second. There you go.
There we go. Green means go. All right. I do have a few questions, and give me the high sign when kickoff is, and I'll stop. So a few things. First, it's, this was, this was the reassessment year, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Odd years are reassessment.
Yes.
So people's assessed valuations, they will see that increase this November.
Right.
On their taxpayers. So it's every odd year.
Yes, well, that's what I thought, and that's why I just call attention to, one could take action with respect to 2024, but it really wouldn't matter, because your reassessment doesn't happen until twenty-five. And so that's, that's all to suggest a few different ways one could go with this, one could pass something with its effective date at a later point, you could wait and see what the legislature does, but I guess, I would be remiss if I didn't at least point out that the, that the lower tax burden doesn't come into effect for a bit, which then allows opportunity to, I don't necessarily say slam on the brakes, but you can coast a little bit to see what happens otherwise, or again, take some action that doesn't actually take effect until later timeframe, so. But I did want to make sure that I had my years right on that. I do have some concern that the presiding commissioner has brought up, and maybe this fits in the same category as the sixty-two, but clearly, so, the way I've always learned it, kind of counselor can correct me, is you cannot do something that the state has not, or has expressly said yes or no. You can go beyond what you can't be in conflict with. And so the issue raised concerning the teachers, the railroad workers, and I guess where I'm going to is it, I can't remember if the state statute is either silent or specific in what they say to those folks, but I, there is a little bit of that fairness in me that says, you know, if you're going to do it for everyone except these folks, then, then there's an issue there, and I, you know, not to say it's a good issue or a bad issue, just there's an issue. And if you're looking for that, or I can have the answer of what this, I just bring it up and believe it at that for the moment. Under E one, where it says the completion, and it suggests that the form required is to, to the county clerk honor before September thirtieth, I do find that to be a pretty tight date, to be able to then execute against that with the other jurisdictions. Thank you very much. Against the jurisdictions, I don't know.
That is correct. We, staff has had conversations at the committee level, looking at process and timing. So what we are envisioning is, whatever year this would go into effect, that from a January through March would be the application process. Especially those first few years, because we expect to receive a number of applications for everybody that is eligible, right? From year going forward, after the first two or three years, we would expect it will be those individuals that move into Clay County or bought a home or turned sixty-two, right? And so the number each year will be more manageable. So, but still, once we get it and we get it verified, there's still work that we have to do to get it into the system to make sure it calculates correctly. So we do not believe September thirtieth, that's too late of a date for us to get it in, get it vetted, get it checked, to ensure that it's calculating correctly before the bills are printed and mailed the first of November. So we're looking at an earlier date.
Yeah, to that point, I mean, we just set our levies a couple years, a couple weeks ago, right? And so that's, when, if you know what you are going to have to send back rebate or whatever, that may have a very important determination of how you will set your levy. So having the ability to understand that and estimate off of that way beforehand, I would think is pretty important.
My understanding, the way the statute is written, it won't come into play, because to set the mill levy and to deal with Hancock, we will treat all properties at their current assessed valuation.
Sure.
Regardless of whether they're, that particular property is eligible for a tax credit.
No, I, that part I understand, it's just, you know, things don't keep getting cheap. They keep getting more expensive. And as we were dealing, our question that we were talking about here was, do you keep the same levy at zero percent, or do you raise it to what you can at five percent? You know, maybe those numbers, at the end of the day, are very tiny, but it just seems to me that anyone who is setting their levies kind of would need to know what's the effect of, you know, what this would do. So I'll just leave it at that. You won't have an answer to this, but I'll at least throw it out there, because the next two points are kind of together. Do, I guess we have some estimate that the auditor has already made as to what may be removed, redirected, or whatever, but I guess, understanding, and maybe you've had this conversation with the, with the other taxing jurisdictions, I mean, does it, does everyone have a feeling of what the impact financially for each of them would be? And if they don't, be good information to know, I don't know if it's been estimated, but just.
Well, I do know that the auditor and the assessor, when this first was discussed and looked at, really just pulled information off of census data and just really did some very rough calculations of percentages, and the auditor's here, so he can probably give more in-depth information.
I knew once I started saying that, I could just see him make his mind.
But I will say that in just having conversations with municipalities, which I have had about this, they have asked whether the county is going to be able to provide an economic impact.
Yeah.
Of this to them, and my comment was, don't know, hold that thought, we'll get back to you.
And I guess that's the central question, can we provide some guidance? I mean, they'll probably create their own guidance, but do we have guidance that we can provide those jurisdictions on what that fiscal impact might be?
Yeah. Victor Hurlbert, Clay County Auditor. We have, you know, since the initial fiscal impact, we looked at some time ago, use the same methodology and approach as legislative research on the fiscal note, for the official fiscal note on SB one ninety. As the administrator said, essentially taking census information, both looking at, what is your population over sixty-two years old? But also looking at, what is it as, as a, you know, residential real estate property taxpayers? So, because currently, we don't collect age on property taxpayers. So we're making an estimate based on the adult population.
Right.
Of the senior population, of the adult population. And then you're looking at the homeowner occupancy rate in the county, so you factor that in. So in Clay County, county-wide, it's fifteen percent senior population, you know, sixty-seven point five percent owner rate. And then you also have to consider, what is the percentage of your total property tax revenues or collections that comes from residential real estate? So county-wide, that's sixty percent, but it is going to vary, to your point, by every single jurisdiction, every single taxing jurisdiction. And I have run individual figures for those taxing jurisdictions upon request. All the school districts, as Commissioner mentioned, we looked at census information for their school districts, so it varies for all those factors. But by doing that, the bottom line county-wide is we got to arrange from assessment data, looking at the American Community Survey, survey of how many actual residential parcels that is, from everything I just told you, of a threshold to essentially nine to twelve percent of total assessed valuation would be frozen as to the growth, to the administrator's point, you know, up to five percent a year.
Right.
So, and you're basically, as we had that discussion before, you know, two to three million dollars on currently, five hundred and ten million dollars total collections, but that's going to increase five percent every year, it's going to compound five percent every year, that two to three million dollar fiscal impact of less growth. And so that's, that's essentially the assessment, and again, it, you know, of that two to three million, every taxing jurisdiction has a portion of that.
Gotcha.
Right? And so it's, you know, factored out that way. I might, I might add, jump into the conversation here, since I did put together that ordinance. And admittedly, it was, it was rather quick, but it was also using the assessor's counsel's template, having a conversation with county council, being on the subcommittee, I did, you know, take all that into account. And I think I'll just throw in that, in adding the sixty-two-year-old, again, St. Charles County did this, sixty-two years or older, Camden County did that. So as to the question of if it's, you know, legal or not, I guess I would say, you know, do we think they're wrong? And if, you know, if that's the case, then we could, we could, you know, not have that expanded eligibility, but I'll just, you know, put that into the conversation.
Sure. I'm sorry, I've got three more. I appreciate your indulgence. And actually, you might be able to also chime in on this, Mr. Auditor. So from time to time, jurisdictions vote to add certain property taxes in order to pay for stuff. How is that treated? So just for example, you know, there's a general obligation bond, property tax gets it, people vote for it. How is that treated then under this? Is that, is that also frozen, or the fact that it was a voted-on bond, does that still stay on the tax?
It's our interpretation, kind of like the administrator, we've had a lot of discussion about this in the subcommittee, because that is a gray area in the law. It's not, it's not specifically defined, right? At least in the statute that was written of one thirty-seven, ten fifty, but we do look at that, Section four, where it does talk about, like administrator talked about in calculating annual revenues under the Hancock Amendment. It's, you know, my belief that the same, same, you know, principle would apply. So if you have a new levy, you're still going to calculate based on total revenues, even if you don't get it because of the credit. So, I mean, you could, you could theoretically add the new tax amount, but there would still be a credit to get you to the, to the credit amount in the eligible year. So it'd be my opinion that they, they could, you know, you know, they would, you would add the new levy, but just want to get the revenue for the, those who received the credit.
Interesting. Okay. And then how does, I recall this summer, when we had the initial presentation from staff, one of the areas that was gray, and I'm not, I'm not sure I see the solution here, was, you know, not all spouses are the same age, right? My wife's younger, my parents are five years apart. When you have difference in age, how is that treated? And I guess, more importantly to me, for the younger, is if they have not reached that sixty-two-year-old threshold, their spouse did, but they have passed, how then do we treat that here? Or is that contemplated?
Well, so I'm, again, you know, my thought on it is, and we've had a lot of discussion, again, about this gray area, vague area in the law, that we're trying to define. I think this is our opportunity as a county, you know, with an enabling statute to craft our own ordinance as we see fit. So I think if the commission wants to, you know, define, because I've added a few restrictions that I could think of, right? Looking at GO bonded indebtedness, that's a big component for public taxing jurisdictions. The blind pension fund, the retroactive refund component. So, you know, if we want to add more, as, you know, as to that situation, I mean, my initial thought, just looking at how it flows, especially if we set sixty-two of eligibility, and no one in the household is sixty-two and a given tax year, then they're no longer eligible. I mean, that's my initial thought.
Understood. Final question, maybe more for Diana. Have we figured out what it would take to staff the execution of this?
No, we do know that we will need to have some additional staff to do the eligibility to kind of help the process, especially those first few years. So we're having some discussion about, you know, because the intent is, the application would come to the clerk's office and then would be reviewed for eligibility, and then there's a list that's presented and then goes to the collector, and then it's calculated. And so, you know, do we share staff, right? So there's a person that's there in the clerk's office during the application period to help with that and the review, and then goes and helps the collector's office during the time the bills go out and we're actually collecting revenue. We've looked at that, we're looking into that, we're also looking into, there are companies that we use that verify employees, right? E-verification. So we're also looking to say, well, all there are companies out there that could also do the qualification, verification of eligibility for us, and pay a vendor to do that, then we wouldn't have to staff for that. So we're going to explore all those options, but at this point in time, I cannot give you a cost analysis of what the implementation of this program is going to cost the county.
Understood, thank you. I'll just make this comment, I understand the desire to try to get something passed to show that we've done something. I understand that and understand those reasons, but because the reassessments won't come again until a couple of years, I would certainly err on the side of, if you want to pass something, fine, but make it effective later so that you can see where all the lawsuits come, if you have to make changes because of what may happen in a different county. But I appreciate the answers to the question, and I appreciate your indulgence in letting me ask so many. Thank you.
Commissioner Carpenter, I believe you'd like to join the conversation?
Thank you, Commissioner, yeah, thanks. I've just got a couple of quick questions and then a few comments. But could, Mr. Auditor, if I could just ask a quick question on the revenue per year The sort of two to three million dollar figure is year one. Do we have, obviously, you know, as the freeze continues to hold over time, that number will go up quite a bit, and then it will plateau at some point, that's just sort of the nature of, you know, the math on this situation of doing a property tax freeze for seniors. So do you have like a year-ten estimate of what the total taxing jurisdiction?
Sure.
Revenue?
Victor Hurlbert, Clay County Auditor, I went out to twenty-twenty-six, but I can easily, you know, do that. So, you know, in the, looking at the lower threshold of nine percent assessed valuation, so by twenty-twenty-six, you know, it started at two-point-one million, based on twenty-twenty-two numbers, and twenty-twenty-six, it would go up to two-point-six million.
Okay, can I stop you just real quick there? So when you say two-point-six in twenty-twenty-six.
Yeah.
Those numbers are adding on top of each other each year, right?
No, that's per year. So, I mean, the total from over a five-year time period would have been twelve million dollars. But at the same time, you have to think of, so currently, we're at five hundred and ten million. You know, that would essentially still go to six hundred and sixteen million, even with the credit in place.
So you're saying by year five, that the total reduction in revenue would only be two-point-six million?
No, that's the annual impact, like the.
Yeah, but I'm talking compared to if we were to not pass, if we were to do nothing. And so, and so by year five, each of those two millions has added on top of each other, right?
Yeah.
So by year five, we're foregoing twelve million?
Cumulatively, yeah.
No, twelve million per year at that point.
No, no, it'd be, again, the same percentage on that year's assessed valuation.
So starting at the base year of twenty-twenty-three, we're going to forego two to three million in year one. In year two, we're going to add a slightly larger number to that, and it's going to become four to six million, and then it's going to become.
So I'm looking at it, it might be miscommunication, and I'm happy to show you, you know, kind of my, the thought process that went into it, but essentially, like, I'm looking at it from an annual revenue perspective, it's currently five hundred and ten million. You know, next year, it's, you know, projected five hundred and thirty-five million. I'm not going to tell you that total collections are, you know, one-point-five billion, or, you know, I'm going to tell you that it's going to be five hundred and thirty-five million. So I'm looking at the annual impact level. I can give you a cumulative impact for a certain amount of years.
Yeah, so to be clear, I don't mean cumulative in the sense of adding each year's foregone revenue to each other. I'm saying comparing, pick a year, five years from now, ten years from now, and comparing that to the base year, and subtracting the difference and seeing what the total number is at that point. So by my math, by the time you get to year five, you are up into the ten to fifteen million dollar range, just that year. And by year ten, you're going to be more than double that, because as you continue to add the numbers, you're, you've got cumulative increase happening at the same time.
So, I mean, it's not, it doesn't work like a, you know, property taxes aren't an investment, you know, it's not like, it's not compounding in that manner, you know?
Yeah, but, yeah, so I think what we need clarity on with regard to those numbers is, by year ten, what would the difference be then if we were to take no action? In year ten alone, I'm not saying add up years one through nine and then add up year ten, just year ten, what would the difference be between tax revenue generated in year ten versus in the base year this year? If we were to take no action versus if we were to implement the program? And the reason I want to get to the bottom of that is because I think it matters whether that number is, as you say, something like three million, or by year ten, I think indeed we'll be into the tens of millions by year ten, is what we'll be foregoing per year, which may well still be a good public policy choice. I'm not saying that should disqualify us from moving forward, but I do think, to Commissioner Wagner's point, we need to have a lot of clarity on exactly what numbers we're talking about. Because if we're talking about hundreds of millions of dollars in total property tax revenue per year, and you're going to freeze fifteen to twenty percent of it, and you have about a five percent per year increase, five percent increase on five hundred million per year, and then you only do, let's say, twenty percent of it, that's a hundred million, so that would be about five million per year. I know we've agreed that it would actually be a little less, that's where you come up with the two to three, but that's per year. That five percent increase keeps happening every year, and the freeze holds in place. And so it's three million in year And so it's 3 million in year one, but it's, the 5% increase in property values happens in year two. It happens in year three, all the way up through year 10. And if you've had a freeze in place that whole time, I can't imagine how we're calculating that the number would be anything like 3 million by year 10 or the three and a half. I mean, you're, you're going to be like 30 million, right?
So I guess what I'm saying is that, you know, the senior population doesn't compound. You know, if, if, if that were to happen, then I would agree with you. You know, respectfully, I'm not trying to, you know, I'm trying to do this in a independent manner, following the state legislative research, uh, you know, methodology. So, I mean, I'm, I'm doing my job here.
Absolutely. And I'm very grateful, uh, for, for, for all the, the work you do for the county. Sincerely. I, I just, let's, in the next week or two, let's try to get to the bottom of, um, if we're talking about a year 10 revenue foregoing of, by, the way it seems to be being portrayed, uh, is that you would suggest maybe by then it would be like 3 and a half million or something like that. Um, I suspect the number is indeed much, much higher, closer to, in the range of 30 million. And both those numbers obviously can't be correct. So if, if we can try to drill down on, on which of those would be the case by year 10, I just think that would be a, a helpful piece of information for us to...
Yeah, I mean, I, I compared my, my approach to St. Louis County, which, you know, uh, to, uh, you know, other similar counties. And it was, it followed proportionally by our population, by our stats.
Yeah. Well, let me, let me try and phrase it this way. So let's say we have about 80 million in residential property that is domiciled by a senior in which it's their primary residence. Is that about where we're at figure-wise, about 80 million?
Uh, no, I wouldn't think so. I mean, are you talking about property revenues or are you talking about assessed value?
Oh, I'm talking about the revenues we get. Yeah.
Okay. Then, then that could be close, yeah, because, you know, 10% is roughly 50. So, yeah.
About 80 million, right? So, so if we do a 5% expected increase in revenue per year, that's about a $4 million per year in new revenue on that property, right? If we expect revenue to go up about 5% on 80 million?
Uh, yeah, but that's, that's not five. Um, it'd be more like, you know, four.
About 4 million. That's what I said. Yeah. So, so my point is it's not just 4 million, it's 4 million in year one
Yep.
of, of a new reassessment. But as the 5% on that 80 million continues to happen every year, which is our, you know, projection of what will happen to real estate, uh, values and the generate, and the revenue generated therefrom, we're going to forego that 4 million, or let's say it's three, or two to three, you know, anywhere in there. We're going to forego that over and over and over again.
So what's, what's 5% of 4 million? So that, that is the change each year. It's not, you're not adding, uh, you know, 80 million a year or, or, you know, 4 million each year. It's 5% of 4 million.
Right. So, so if we're generating about 80 million, that's the revenue generated, right? That would be the, the revenue side. The assessment is much higher.
Yeah, and that stays there because it's a credit. It's not a, it's not a reduction. So...
Okay. So as we get more property tax revenue per year, it's often, we're, we're often going up by tens of millions of dollars per year in property tax, right?
Uh, increases each year, yeah.
Yeah. So if we're, if we're experiencing tens of millions of dollars in growth per year in property tax, and you freeze 20% of that per year, or 18% of it per year, which would be the seniors, 15% is fine. I, i, if you freeze anywhere close to that, the tens of millions of dollars increase per year, if you freeze one-fifth of it or one-sixth of it.
But you're not freezing that much, respectfully. You're freezing 5% of your figure. Because that's, that's the only growth you can get. It's not the entire amount. That's the fiscal impact.
Let's, let's talk offline. I, I look forward to having some conversations, just try to get some clarity on this. Uh, because, because my read of the situation is that we go up in property tax revenue, not just the assessments, the actual revenue generated, uh, on the order of tens of millions of dollars per year is the average increase.
Yeah, it's going to be...
And, and if you freeze about 20% of that, then each year, you're going to forego about 20% of that tens of millions of dollars of increase.
No, you're, you're foregoing the growth on the relevant senior population proportion, which we're saying is only 9%. So 5% of 9%, that's what you're foregoing.
All right. Let's, I look forward, let's talk offline. I appreciate the discussion. Thank you. Oh, no, yeah, sorry. Like I said, got to cut. One more question and then some comments. Uh, question, th, those of you who met with the, uh, school districts, did they, you, you mentioned you had the meeting, did they have any input or suggestions or changes or anything that, that they communicated to us?
Commissioner Lawson, I, I tell you what, uh, I'm going to go ahead and go to Commissioner Lawson for the, uh, response to this. You were queued up next to make comment, followed by Commissioner Johnson, but I've noticed we've been losing a few people. So what I'd like to do is, once Commissioner, uh, Carpenter has had his information, his inquiry of you, I'd like to open it up to the public and then we will come back and pick it up with Commissioner Lawson and then Commissioner Johnson. But I, I don't want to see citizens leaving not have the opportunity to speak, so please proceed. Go ahead and hit your button. I'll, I'll put you over there. Oop, you were on and off.
Okay, do me.
There you are. Now you're on.
Yeah, you know, to the senior citizens here or up here or whatever. I thought this was going to be simple. I thought, oh my God, we're going to give the people 62 and over that have paid taxes all their darn life a break. I didn't know it was going to get quite so involved. But nevertheless, I'm pushing forward to get it done. That's the main thing. A couple of things. I, I thought that, uh, that we had agreed at one point that, say, I'm 57, I wish, and my husband is 70, and he passes away. Then that following year, when I get my thing from the county, I will say I'm 58, and for a couple of years, I won't get the break. And then, as I hit 62 and you send out my form again, then I fill it out. Now I'm 62 and I can start taking the break. I, I don't, that's something I'd like to see us, we don't have to get into it, but I'd like to see us do that, talk about that a little bit down the road. The other thing on the, the millions and billions and all of that stuff, this county is growing by leaps and bounds. I, I, I get the point that we're looking at about 15% of the population being seniors. So if we are 510 million this year, we go up to 535 next year. That same percentage of people are going to get a break and they're going to start, yeah, it's going to reduce that to some degree. But the degree of reduction is, is minimal compared to the amount of tax that comes into this county. These people are still going to be paying the same amount of money that they've been paying. They're going to continue to pay their taxes until we're gone. And then whoever takes the house after that, the wife or whatever, going to continue on. And, and as those people go away, somebody's going to buy that house. They're going to be 40, and they're going to start paying full taxes right away on that property. It's been, now it's been assessed at a way higher value, as properties always do. So as the population passes on, the, the new owners are going to be somebody that's going to pay a hell of a lot, uh, fa, faster.
No, I was going, I was going to let you finish. Please, when, uh, keep your mic on because I was going to ask Commissioner Carpenter if he had further inquiries. So if, if, if you finished your point, I would go to Commissioner Carpenter.
The only thing I'm saying is, is I, I, I agree with Commissioner Withington. I want to see this darn thing be done. In whatever form we bring it, it is a, it's, it's something that many other counties have already passed. Counties that are lesser counties than we. And it's a darn shame if we can't do this for our seniors and get it done. I, I don't want to rush it right away, and I think we need to get everything formulated, get you the figures you'd like to have in depth. And I think that, that one of the things that the auditor was going to do was to give the school districts a little bit more fact on that. I did feel that they were, by the time we were done, now maybe that's just wishful thinking on my part, but I felt as though they were more accepting of it than they were when we first walked in the door. So that was a great deal of gratification for me. But, but the bottom line on this, I'd like to see us, um, look towards trying to get this thing passed with some, uh, minor, um, changes. And then, we can't, I don't think we can wait for the state, but once the state makes their changes, if they ever do, we can make our addendums and change it and then go forward. The thing I don't want to have happen is that staff is scrambling, you know, and we're changing this, then they change everything, and then it changes again and they change everything and cost more money or whatever. So, you know, I want to be diligent in what we do. But, but some minor changes that we think are going to happen, we need to be planning for them and just go ahead and get this darn thing done. That's all I got.
Commissioner Carpenter, do you want to further inquire?
Thank you. Uh, thank you. So first of all, I, I know, look, I, I'm probably kind of on an island here on this issue and I, I have no hard feelings. Uh, you know, I think I probably have a different perspective on, on the, uh, the issue before us. On, on the numbers piece, I do just want us to have sort of clarity on, you know, because obviously there's a difference between three or four million and, and 30 million. So I, I'm just seeking clarity on, on that piece of it. In terms of the question I asked about the school districts, I, I'm gratified to hear that it was a good meeting and that perhaps people came away, you know, a little, uh, more informed and, uh, good with it. Uh, I was just wondering if they had any specific, um, asks or requests.
Oh, did you want to, you're...
That's okay.
Okay.
Which is the money, you know, that they wanted those figures from the auditor who's giving us.
I would, I would agree, since you inquired of both of us, that yes, it's substantially the way Commissioner Lawson has, has put it. I think one of the, the issues that they want to make clear, in fairness, uh, to the school districts is that they were not in opposition, in principle, with, uh, with tax breaks for seniors. I think that's fair to say. They wanted to be very clear on that point. I, again, I, I hesitate to speak for someone, but the feel I got for it was that they were concerned about the impact on their entities, but they were in sympathy with the goal. One of the issues that they, that was brought up, and it was one that, that we had already brought up within our, our group, uh, had to do with, um, debt bonds, to where if there is a, something that is issued that was debt, could we then actually freeze that? Because that would be a, I believe, there, i, i, it was in some question. What that would mean was technically, could we then totally freeze? I don't know. That's something else that we have to, I, I, I would like further clarity on before we go forward because if we, if, if we're going to give a freeze, it would, I would like it to be an absolute total freeze. If we're going to sell, if, if we're going to present it in that light, we should, I think, make sure we deliver it in that light. If there are some mitigating circumstances, we need to advise, um, uh, the public that there are these issues which we do not have authority over in, in the course of putting this ordinance together. So does that, that kind of, so, um, does that help to...
It does. Thank you. Yeah. No, I, I appreciate the information. I just, you know, obviously they're our biggest taxing jurisdiction, and so just getting, you know, some, some input from them is, is, uh, is helpful. So I'll make some brief, as brief as I can, comments. Look, I could talk about this issue for hours and hours, but I know we got some folks who, uh, want to, want to share their thoughts on us if we got the choose game. So I'll, I'll go as quick as I can. Uh, you know, served eight years in the, uh, state legislature, regularly supported the notion of, uh, expanding, uh, uh, property tax relief to, to low-income seniors and seniors living on a fixed income, to make sure that we're not taxing folks out of their home as they age. Firmly and strongly believe in that. The state, uh, has long had a program that does just that. It's called the Circuit Breaker Program. It has pretty tight income eligibility, uh, to where most seniors can't qualify unless they're pretty low income. What the state legislature could have done is expanded the eligibility. May, you know, uh, allowed you to earn more income to, to get the property tax relief. Uh, and I would have been a, a, a strong proponent of, of such, such a change to, to help out, uh, seniors living on a fixed income, make sure they can stay in their homes. What they did instead was, was pass a, a cart blotch freeze, which would apply to all seniors. And not all seniors equally either. Uh, so not only does it not target the benefit to, uh, uh, fixed income or low-income seniors as the current, uh, uh, option does, it applies it across the board and unevenly. So for example, a senior living in a $100,000 home, and a senior living in a $2 million home, the senior living in a $2 million home is not only going to get the benefit too, they're going to get it at 20 times the value as the senior living in a $100,000 home. Making by far the biggest winners, the, the folks who own the most expensive homes in Clay County and across the state. That's my issue with, with the way this thing has been drafted. Uh, it's, it's not that I'm opposed to, uh, like I said, making sure that fixed income seniors, uh, can get property tax relief. They should. But I'm not overly enthused about the idea of giving a 20 times bigger tax break to somebody in a $2 million home. So that's my concern. Uh, would be happy to support, uh, doing this if we attached a, uh, some form of limit on the assessed value of homes in terms of who, uh, would get the benefit. My sense of things is that I, I may sort of be outnumbered in, in regard to, to wanting that attached to it. And I understand that and respect that. But if, uh, folks want to come around and join me in, in pursuing, uh, adding a provision like that into this, that would certainly, um, make me a lot more excited about, about implementing it. And then final point is, when we do, uh, a, a, a tax cut on one targeted group of people, by definition, what's going to happen is, you know, the school districts, for example, you know, they're still going to need to employ the same number of teachers. They've still got the same number of buildings to maintain. And indeed, uh, as population grows in Clay County, they will have to expand those services and their expenses will expand. By definition, what will happen is that over time, the tax burden, as it's lifted off of one group, will be transferred on to the rest of the taxpayers whose property taxes are not frozen. And so that makes it especially hard for me, knowing that the biggest beneficiaries of this will be folks in the most expensive homes, that every dollar less that they pay is going to be transferred on to the tax burden of everybody whose property taxes weren't frozen. Uh, and that includes a lot of young families with kids who are struggling to make ends meet already. I think there's a way to avoid that outcome, and that would be putting an upper limit on, uh, on eligibility here. But those are my concerns. Appreciate you all hearing me and look forward to future discussions on the, on the, some of the numbers and drilling down on that a bit. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, with that, are there any citizens who would like, yes? Hold on, let me, let me open your mic first. I'm sorry? I know it. Uh, it's, we've had a lot, and you've, and you're pretty much in your turn. Right now you are up next, and then Commissioner Lawson. Commissioner Lawson was being, was being inquired of, but we've also got citizens here, and I've noticed some of them leaving, that have been sitting as long. So I mean, if, if you could do something really quick, because I, I'm, because we really do need to get to the folks.
Thank you. Here, here's the way I feel, and it'll be over my dead body that we make a change on that. And, and the reason is this. Those individuals who live in a million-dollar home, God bless them that they were able to live in a million-dollar home. Bottom line here for those people is, yeah, they're going to get a break, but by God, for all these years, they've been paying huge amounts of money in taxes. And so why can't they get the same kind of break? I, if I live in a $100,000 home, that break that I get is going to mean a great deal to me. The guy in the million-dollar home, it's going to be a big deal to him too. But all these years, he's been carrying the burden. And so I think it's about time he got the break. John and I had this conversation the other day... John and I had this conversation the other day, off the record, so to speak. And just in talking, I told him about a couple that I knew that came from nothing. They were dirt poor. The husband and the wife both poor. And they worked, went to college, paid for it by working, and twice as long to get through. He got a great job. He worked his fanny off. And today, that man is filthy rich, they live in a very nice home, but they didn't get it with a handout. They got it through clean, hard work. This is America, for God's sake. It's the American dream that you make as much as you can make, and God bless you when you do. And so I do not want to see somebody penalized just because they've worked, yeah, there's going to be the few that were given wealth, but let's look at the majority that really deserve it. And there's not that many seniors, if you look at Clay County, I'd like to go out and find out, and I think I'll talk to the assessor about this, how many homes in Clay County are over $800,000 to $2 million? And of those homes, how many seniors own them? And if those few people get a break, I say it's good for them to get it. That's all I got to say. Let you guys talk.
We need to, we all, I think, appreciate the applause and enthusiasm, however, it is getting late, and I want to allow citizens to come up and speak, so let's, I would rather not have any delays to allowing citizens to speak from shows of emotion, but please come forward, and it's the same as when you came up for comments from the public. Yes, sir. You've had a chance. This gentleman has not had a chance. You haven't spoken on this issue?
He's not had a chance to make this point.
Very well, if you'd like to go before them, go right ahead. Commissioner Johnson, if you insist, you're recognized.
I do insist, thank you. Just for a couple of clarifications, sorry, sir, you're, first of all, I'll clarify a couple of things. Commissioner Wagner brought it up. Whether we vote this in next month or next year, it will not have an impact on anybody's taxes until 2025, until your 2025 payment. Just know that. It doesn't have an impact until 2025, no matter when we voted in. However, I know that voting it in sooner will make people feel a lot more at ease when they're living paycheck to paycheck, so I understand that. That, number one. Number two, one of the issues we're talking about is who's eligible. The current state bill, Senate bill that has been approved, is very vague. It just says that you're eligible, if you're eligible for Social Security retirement benefits. Well, does that mean that you get Social Security retirement benefits, or you're just eligible for them? And the problem is, there's many people who will never be eligible for Social Security benefits because they're on another retirement system that didn't pay to it. Talked about, I think, teachers are one, railroads. If you come from out of state, like I do, I never paid in Social Security, I'll never be eligible for Social Security because I have a separate public pension that's not part of Social Security. So what this does, it includes everybody basically that's over 62. It gets rid of trying to figure out who's who. Last couple things to Commissioner Carpenter's comments. Number one, nobody will be, whether it's the school districts or it's the county, will not be having a reduction in revenue coming in. And I know he knows this. It's not a reduction in revenue. We'll still be making more taxes each year because of the assessments. The school district will still be getting more money each year. It just won't be as much as it could have made because there's going to be a little bit of reduction for the seniors. And we talked about the analogy that Commissioner Carpenter said about, you know, a $100,000 home versus a $2 million home, and it's a big benefit to the person who owns a $2 million home. Well, bottom line, here's the facts. Let's say it's a, just for even a number, it's a 1% tax. If you own a $100,000 home, you're going to be frozen at $1,000 a year you have to pay. If you own a $200 million home, you're going to be frozen at $20,000 a year you have to pay. So $2 million home, you pay $20,000 a year at this 1% scenario given, $20,000 a year. A $100,000 home, you're paying $1,000 a year. You're paying 20 times as much because you have a bigger house, a more expensive house. I don't see any need to punish those people anymore. That's why we have a tax system that's based on percentage. The richer you are, the more you're going to pay, no matter what. And by not giving them the same credit, you're just, in my opinion, it's just, it's just an unbur, it's not fair. And they're going to be paying more, just like the rich pay more now, when you look at how much taxes are paid. So I agree with Commissioner Lawson. We just, just across the board, it applies to everybody. Forget the values and your income, that kind of stuff. I think just 62 and above, I think it's a great idea. You're on a fixed income, whether, I just think it's great. Anyways, that's it.
Yes, sir, please. And just to review, if you could, you obviously have the microphone on, state your name and then speak clearly. And obviously, since this is a noticed item, we can interact with you as much as we need to.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dave Langston, 1920 Carter Court, Liberty, Missouri. Let's see, my family moved here in '64, so I've been in Clay County quite a while. And we're talking about, and I believe you made this pretty clear, Commissioner Johnson, we're talking about a tax freeze. We're not talking about tax reduction, as I understand the program. So there was some talk about a tax reduction, it's a tax freeze. It amounts to a reduction over time, if that's the way you look at it, but it's a tax freeze. And I didn't really hear anything mentioned about farmers to speak of. I guess farmers that live on their land, their whole farm would be frozen. Farmers that don't live on their land, it won't be frozen?
That's an issue that has been under discussion. I don't know if we've quite come to our conclusions on that because, well, just because it's a complicated issue. Commissioner Lawson, I would defer to you to make any explanation that you'd care to. It's your, I'll go ahead and hit your mic and I'll activate it. There you go.
David, I don't have an answer on that yet, but we are getting the answer. I would assume, and it's just an assumption, if you have a farm and you have your primary residence on that farm, you know, say a 100-acre farm and your house, then you would get your break if you were 62 or older. Now, say that you've got 500 acres in the next, you know, five blocks away, or five acres away or something, all of a sudden, that's all yours too. That's not your primary residence. So I'm thinking it's your house, the land that goes with that, right in that house. And right now, we need to get that clarified to make dead certain sure.
That sounds reasonable, thank you. I was going to, it sounds like most of the commissioners are leaning this way of trying to help seniors out. You know, there was a big deal about Social Security. I'm kind of an old guy, a big deal about Social Security, but the country decided they owed that to people because they had made the contribution to the country. And the country, we're really in debt now, but back then, they went in debt because nobody paid in to pay those people Social Security. My grandfather was one of them. And, you know, there's a little bit of consideration there that maybe we owe these old people. You can call me an old person, but there's some people in the county that are really old. And I'll just give you kind of a short example. There's a couple, let's say four blocks over here, I know where they're at exactly, but they've been married over 50 years. And they got a house over there, and, you know, they're getting way up in years. And for them to pay those property taxes, they're going to the market every week and they're buying always safe. And they're on the hot dog diet because they got to save up. December isn't a happy month for them. You know, they got to pay those property taxes, killing them. And they'd like to stay in that home till they die or have to go to the nursing home or something, but the taxes are a big consideration for them. And there, I can give you other examples, but I don't want to take up too much time here. But they're, you know, they need the help. I like hot dogs too, about once every 60 days, but they're on the regular diet because they got to save that money. So we need to give them a break. I'd appreciate it if you can make that happen, and I'd appreciate if you can do it sooner than later. And I appreciate every commissioner, everything you've said, all the considerations. I don't necessarily agree with everything, but I don't have to. You know, for us to all agree, that'd be amazing. But if we can get a general consensus to agree on something that'll help these old folks, that'd be great. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any other citizen who'd wish to address this issue?
I don't know anything about how this thing works, but I'm Linda Wees, 211 Laura. I've lived in Liberty since 1975. I'm almost 70 years old. When my husband and I, we had no children, but we paid school taxes right along, we were happy to do it. He's been deceased now for almost 15 years. I live on a widow's Social Security benefit. How many of you people are living on less than $1,000 a month trying to pay taxes? I'm a little person, I'd like to stay in my house until I die. I'm not the only one who feels that way. I've talked to my neighbors. I just heard, "Social Security, we're going to get a big 3.2% raise." Big whoop. That doesn't cover my food, it doesn't cover my gas. I'm still working part-time to supplement my income. I appreciate what you're trying to do, and I hope something will get passed to help us. Thank you.
Any other citizen wishing to address this issue?
I'm Sharon Crony. I live in Lawson. I read over this. I printed it off today and I read this draft. And so you have addressed one of my questions already, Mr. Johnson, that this actually isn't going to take effect the way it is written until 2025. Because all of us that are over 62 already will become eligible in 2024 if you start it on January 1st, but then you have to have a baseline tax rate to give your credit against. And so that won't happen until 2025. You know, some of these other people, and I'm in the same boat. You're saying, sir, that you don't want to, you want to wait and not do it. I believe the intent of the state was to provide a benefit for senior citizens that were struggling. And we all know a lot that are struggling. But I'm a widow, it takes me one whole month's check to pay your taxes. And it's not going to get better this year because my assessment went up 15%. So I'm expecting a bigger bill this year than last. So that means it's going to be more. And if you wait until 2024 to make my baseline, that's going to be a really hard baseline for me to hit. You all are acting like we're getting, we're going to get it free. Some of you that are saying, oh, we're going to lose all this money. I don't read it that way, maybe I'm mistaken. I don't think we're getting it free, we're just going to freeze it at the current high level, which is still going to be difficult for all of us that are struggling. So my one suggestion to you is, if you want to make a small amendment to this, that would actually help, if that is your intent, and to go along with the state, that you would write it, Section B, number one, the eligible credit amount, don't say the year that the taxpayer became eligible. Make it say the year prior to when the taxpayer became eligible. It seems reasonable and fair and right to me that the year the taxpayer becomes eligible that they should receive a credit. And this won't affect anybody that's just starting in '24, because if you just say, make it '23's taxes to freeze, that's not going to give anybody an upper hand or anything else. Everybody's going to be on the same page in 2024. But that would very much help the people that are already, right now, struggling to not have to wait two more years and come up with two more years' high taxes. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
If you could stay right there for a moment. Commissioner Lawson, I believe you were seeking recognition.
Yeah, I want to explain something. When they say you're eligible, that year you're eligible, they don't mean the tax year, they mean the year you turn 62.
But I'm talking about all the people who are already 62, of which I am one.
Right, right. And that's right. But what I'm saying is, when they do the, when we do this, say we don't do it till '25, we're going to charge the taxes that you're charged today. We're not going to wait until they go back up in '25 and then hit you with them. What you're paying this time is what you'll pay next year, and this will go into effect before taxes go up. So you won't see, you know, you won't see an increase.
Well, that's not clear in the way it's written, according to the way I read it.
I apologize. No, but that is exactly what they mean. And because it's going to go up in '25, we're already saying it is what it is right now. We're not going to charge you in what the '25 rate might be. It will be what it's right now.
But the baseline, where are you going to put the baseline? Is that going to be '24's taxes or '23's taxes?
'24, yeah, but '24 will be the same as '23, correct, Diana?
Correct. '24 is not a reassessment year. So your assessment should not go up. Yeah, you guys keep saying that, but you know...
No, I'm telling you the truth.
Last year was not a reassessment year either, and my taxes went up 11% last year. So I don't know how you can say it doesn't go up, it wasn't a reassessment year, and somewhere in here, about limited to 5%, that's not true either, so...
Well, here's the other thing. The only thing that this is going to do is it is going to be on your primary residence.
Yes, ma'am.
So if taxes went up, say like your car or something else, but the house tax, if you will...
Yes.
That's going to be frozen, in essence, as of '24, which is the same as '23. So I'm promising you, I'm not flim-flamming you, because I'm going to get that credit too, and I want to see that it's done the right way. It is going to happen in '25, but it will be at the current rate. So you will not get hit again with another raise on your primary residence, if that makes sense.
It makes sense.
Okay.
I'd love to see it happen.
Ma'am, could you pause for just a minute, because we have another inquiry. By the way, something more for a general point, and that is, what we are discussing tonight is in fact a draft version. So I want to make sure that I emphasize to all citizens that changes are certainly, we have the ability to make those. Right now, it's still a work in progress, so your observations, yours and other citizens, are absolutely welcome, not only in this particular forum, but through any other means that you want to contact us. With that, Commissioner Carpenter, I believe you sought recognition.
Thank you. I just want to thank you for coming and sharing, and same to the last couple of folks who spoke. Just want to make sure that for all three of you and anybody who's listening, in terms of the current Circuit Breaker property tax relief, I just want to make sure everybody knows about it, because not everybody does.
I don't qualify. I've tried.
Okay.
I've gotten it once, since my husband passed away seven years ago, I've gotten it once.
And I'm sorry that, I'm sorry that you don't. And so to the other folks too, and again, anybody listening, if you, at least check, see if you qualify for the current Circuit Breaker. It's a state program that sends you a state tax credit to help lessen your property tax burden. The state should absolutely expand eligibility so that folks like you, you know, the story you just shared makes it clear that you ought to qualify for the Circuit Breaker. And with the Circuit Breaker too, it's an even better benefit, because to your point, this is just freezing the current tax rates. It doesn't, you don't get to stop paying property tax. With the Circuit Breaker program, you get an actual cash back against the amount that you had to pay in property tax. The state will send you money back to help lessen your property tax obligation, and it's actually a much better benefit than simply freezing tax rates where they are right now. And I really wish, and I hope, you know, the legislature, talking about what we can communicate to the legislature, one of the things we can communicate is that we think they ought to expand eligibility so that folks like you can qualify. You know, I think your government ought to do a lot more to help low-income seniors who are struggling make ends meet. I'm sorry that they don't. I hope that we're able to do something with this, and I hope the Circuit Breaker, which would do even more, can be expanded. I hope they expand Social Security benefits at the federal level at some point. It's been talked about for years, it's time to do it. But most, I just want to say, I appreciate you all for sharing your stories, and I hear you in terms of the hardship that's out there, there's a lot of it, and you're not alone, and I hope that we can do something to help you. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Any other citizen wishing to comment? Please come forward and make sure the light is on for your microphone, so we can hear you fine. There you go.
Sorry, thank you, Commissioner. It's my first time. It's an honor to be here tonight. My name is Charles Don Morris, a lifetime resident here of Clay County. I live on the corner of H Highway in Lancaster. I live on the corner of H Highway in Lancaster, named after my grandfather, Charles Ray Morris, First Class Sergeant. I just recently lost my grandmother a few years ago and she had left me five acres and my home out there. And I guess my thing is I'm just trying to, I'm kind of coming on a different aspect with this. I just was kind of wondering, because I've lived out there my entire life, I'm 33 years old. My questions are kind of for the winter coming on. Every year out there since I've been a kid, every time we've had snow, anything like that. I just live just a little bit outside the slitty limits, just a little bit east past William Jewel. Once the city line ends, there's no, it seems like everything for Clay County, everything just happens for the city of Liberty and not, we don't seem to get a lot of resources out there like snow removal. I've been trying to submit about getting some, just a few street lights put on corners due to the fact that all of our wildlife, a lot of our wildlife gets obliterated out there all year. Deers, foxes, just all kinds of animals. It's been so dark out there. I kind of have a whole lot of stuff to go over. I didn't really, this was kind of more about the seniors tonight. I wasn't really trying to, I just kind of wanted to introduce myself to you guys and let you guys know that I'm going to be a lifetime member here. I'm going to spend the rest of my life here. My family moved here in 1974. We're first settlers from Dubuque, Iowa. We own about 400 some acres up there. Me and my father, American pools. We build in-ground swimming pools for living here. Big time member at St. Stevens Lutheran Church. Pastor Joe Rodriguez up there. I guess my question is, I feel like Clay County, we are so prosperous. We've been, I feel like Clay County has been the most prosperous county as far as revenue, business, from east, west, north and south. I personally, and I inherited my home and I personally had to pay, our property tax was about almost three grand last year. I guess I'm just asking, because I'm only 33 years old, I got a long ways to go. I have a lot of things to try to accomplish here for the county. I'm just trying to ask maybe if there's any roles available in the county that I could possibly apply for or just anything I can do to help, man. My name is Charles John Morris and that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. We certainly, you know, condolences for your loss.
It's okay.
Would you give your contact information to the administrator? And, you know, maybe if, you know, right now or later on, whatever is convenient, along with some of the issues that you raised? Because there were a couple of them there and we don't want to just address one issue that you're interested and we want to make sure that we're responsive as possible.
Yes, I understand. Thank you.
Thank you.
God bless.
Are there any other citizens wishing to come forward and speak? All right, seeing none, I'm getting ready to, I think maybe round this off a little bit. I want to, I just mentioned a couple of things that occurred to me. One was Commissioner Carpenter brought up the Circuit Breaker Act. And that is something that has been in place in Missouri for some time. It is generally for people of lower income. So it's difficult sometimes for people to be able to qualify. Prior to around 2010 or somewhere in that area, there was something called the Homestead Preservation Act, which was designed for people who were of the next level up. Unfortunately, the House, at that time, I served in the House of Representatives, was able to renew that. It was sunsetted. Unfortunately, the Senate did not extend it, which kind of took the place of some of the relief that was extended to seniors for their property taxes. At the time, I tried to put together legislation that would limit the increase of seniors' property taxes to the rate of social security increases. At that time, social security benefit increases was zero. The rationale that I employed was if the government thinks that seniors can live on 0% increase, maybe the government should live on 0% increase for a little while and see how they fare. That being said, we do want to make sure that we hear the voices of our citizens and on this issue, particularly the seniors that are affected by this. We will no doubt be discussing this further as we go along. We do really want you to give us your input. You can certainly email us directly. You could send your comments to the administrator who will then distribute them if that would be your preference. But by all means, we want to make sure that you take every opportunity to contact us, to express your thoughts on it and also to inquire of us of any information that might inform you more as far as what you, what your thoughts are on this particular ordinance that we are considering. So we, one of the things that is, that we do take some time with and that is to make sure that we hear from you, the citizens, because it's your government and we want to be responsive. With that, Commissioner Lawson, this was your discussion item. If you would like to conclude it, I see no one else seeking recognition. Why don't you go ahead and just carry it on home? Oh, I'm sorry. Let me get you over there.
No, I have nothing else to say other than, you know, we do want to get this done. We want to do it properly. And so, you know, if anybody has questions, like Commissioner Nolte said, you can reach any of us. Call here to the courthouse and they'll put you through to our office and we'll be happy to talk to you. So with that, let's, hopefully we can work forward on this and get it done in a good timeframe, even if it isn't tomorrow.
The hour is getting rather late and we've been at this for two hours now. I think what I'd like to do is to stand at ease for a short period of time and then roll through what we have left on our agenda, which is not inconsiderable. So let's take a break until a little bit after 8:00 and then we will start rolling through this. Obviously, any citizens who have attended and were here specifically for the senior issue, you're always more than welcome to stay for any and all of our public meetings and make whatever comments when issues come up that you see fit. With that, we will stand at ease for five or six minutes. Thank you.
What in your to look? You know, what, whatever that you wish. But we'll still only be like any of the states we present. That is the answer that they're going to find. As far as. And so, and when I say one nation, obviously. But I think it's all sort of. Yeah. And you're. Oh, right. Right. Okay. I mean, here's, here's, here's what I'd say. That's a, that's a, that's a, that's a. Because we need to tell them that I'm not allowed to. I have another. Okay.
Okay, as was pointed out, a factor of three seems to have been pretty accurate as far as my estimate on time. So I appreciate the accuracy expressed. We are now returned from our, from standing at ease. Next is the consent agenda. Administrator?
The consent agenda allows the commission to act upon items considered to be routine and approved in one motion. These may include items that have been reviewed by the commission in a prior session. There will be no separate discussion unless a commissioner requests that an item be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. There is one item on tonight's consent agenda, Resolution 2023-323, approving invoice payments for Clay County from September 22nd to October 6th. There are 367 invoices totaling $551,185.23.
Commissioner Wagner?
I think you move to approve tonight's consent agenda.
Motion's been made for the approval of tonight's consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, you're recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wagner? Commissioner Willington?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0.
I think you move to approve tonight's Consent Agenda.
Motion's been made for the approval of tonight's Consent Agenda. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wagner?
Aye.
Commissioner Withington?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0.
Brings us to our regular agenda. The first item on regular agenda is 2023-324. Administrator?
Resolution 2023-324 is consideration of invoice payments for the Clay County Prosecutor's Office from September 22 through October 6. There are six invoices totaling $876.32.
Commissioner Wagner?
I think you move to approve 2023-324.
Motion's been made for the approval of 2023-324. Discussion, seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wagner?
Aye.
Commissioner Withington?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
I recuse myself.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Motion passes. Five in favor, one recusal.
Item 2023-325 has been deleted from our agenda, so that brings us to 2023 Ordinance 36. Administrator?
2023 Ordinance 36 is an ordinance reappropriating and revising the adopted budget for the current year in the amount of $186,666. And this is in relationship to grants received for domestic violence court. Dr. Hargrave is here if the Commission has any questions about this.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, is there a motion? Commissioner Wagner?
Thank you. Move to approve 2023 Ordinance 36.
Motion's been made for the approval of 2023 Ordinance 36. Further discussion, seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wagner?
Aye.
Commissioner?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0.
Thank you. That brings us to item 2023-326. Administrator?
Resolution 2023-326 is approving ARPA funding for the Justice Center roof replacement project. This was discussed several weeks ago when we talked about the ARPA project. It's in the amount of $440,000 from lost revenue category of ARPA funds. And Director Coons is here if you have any questions. Sorry. Deputy County Administrator, sorry.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, is there a motion? Commissioner Wagner?
Thank you. Move to approve 2023-326.
Motion's been made for the approval of 30, excuse me, 2030, 2023-326. I just need to slow it a bit. Further discussion, seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wagner?
Aye.
Commissioner Withington?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0.
That brings us to the final item on this evening's regular agenda, and that would be approving conditions for Resolution 2023-322. Administrator?
Resolution 2023-322 is considering the, approving the conditions within the conditional use permit for the exotic, dangerous, wild animal facility under the conditional use permit. This item was discussed with the Commission last week during your meeting. You did approve the conditional use permit, and it was discussed that the conditions of the CUP would be brought back to the Commission tonight for consideration. And I'll turn the discussion over on the conditions to County Councilor Graham.
Thank you. So Mr. Jones and I went through this over the last week since the vote. The conditions that you have now in front of you are, I believe, reflect the conditions in the direction we were given. I'm happy to answer any specific questions or go over them if you'd like, but I think they comport with exactly the direction we were given.
Commissioner Withington?
Yeah, so I want to, I want to give people the opportunity to talk, but I want to make a motion that we approve Resolution 2023-322.
Motion's been made for the approval of the conditions. Let's see, has this got a number attached to it, or is it?
It does. 322.
Just go ahead and name it, because we'd already passed it. I want to make sure I was using the correct terminology. Okay, motion's been made for the approval of 2023-322. Discussion, Commissioner Lawson.
I just have a question for the attorney, or perhaps for the young lady that owns it, however. So y'all have read these?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And then I would like to ask the young lady to come up just for a second, please.
If you could go ahead and identify yourself for the audio, your recordings.
Jennifer Castor?
Okay. Yeah, so here's the only question I have. You've read all these?
Correct.
And you agree with them completely, correct?
Correct.
Okay. If something happens, and these are, for some reason, something goes awry, and you don't complete some of these, will you abide then that you're gonna, that conditional use permit will go away, and you will not file a lawsuit against the county again? Will you meet these requirements, and if you don't, will you file a lawsuit because you haven't met them, like it has been in the past? That's my only question.
I can advise my client never to go to court or avail herself of due process. If there is a revocation proceeding, she does have a right to go to court, but she understands she has to comply with everything, and if there is a substantiated reason to revoke it, she will lose her license. She does understand that.
That's all I have.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Would the applicant like to make any kind of a statement before we conclude the debate?
I appreciate all of you guys' time with this. I know it's taken time, years and all of that, and appreciate your, you know, thoroughness with looking through everything and listening and, you know, your time with it. Thank you.
Commissioner Wagner?
Thank you, and I apologize. And perhaps the County Counselor can direct me. Where do I find the changes that we have made?
So there are, from what you saw, you mean from the first draft you saw this week, the small changes that happened just in, or the additions that we talked about last week?
Yeah, the substantive changes that we've made.
Sure.
Last week and today. Where do those appear?
Sure. So number six has some changes regarding screening. Make sure there's more screening, and it has to be, it has to be up to Mr. Jones's specifications. Number nine has fencing requirements. There's some language in there that would allow some time to fix a problem. 10, 11, 12, 13, 14 are all new, basically, again, in line with what I believe the direction was we received, about the, you know, the cats particularly. 15, we kind of embraced a concept of animal units and three animal units, which would allow for some flexibility up or down on the animals. 17 would require notification every time an animal is added or removed. I don't think we made any changes to 18. And 21, I think was in there last time, but I know that was certainly one that I wanted to make sure we had.
Very good, and thank you, and I apologize for the one non-Chiefs fan who's probably watching from home, or for their benefit, but I was trying to swim through all this as well, so thank you. And if counsel doesn't mind, I'll re-ask the question a little bit differently than my colleague did. Is there anything in here that there is disagreement on, or that there is any hesitation on from either you or your client related to this?
No, we negotiated. We, I've worked with Mr. Graham. We agree to this. She will abide by it.
Very well. And the last question is, it is my impression that there is something, if I, if I've carried this correctly, there is currently something in the appellate court related to this case?
There is in circuit court. With the approval of this, I've spoken with Mr. Graham. Tomorrow morning, I'm going to file a voluntary dismissal if the CUP is granted.
Very well. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Other questions or discussion? Seeing none, is anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing none, Commissioner Withington, this is your motion, so you are recognized to close.
I close.
Very well. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Withington?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
No.
Commissioner Wagner?
Aye.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
I'll be abstaining due to a potential conflict of interest.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Motion passes 4-1.
Thank you. That completes our regular agenda on this evening, for this evening. Discussion items, of course, we've already dealt with. That brings us to number 11, Reports, the Auditor's Cash Basis Monthly Report.
The report is included in the packet.
Great. Administrator comments?
Just for information, the next Commission meeting is next Thursday evening at 6:00 PM here in the chambers.
Brings us to Commissioner comments. Commissioner Wagner?
I'm good, thank you.
I'm sorry. Let me go ahead and make sure you get your, Commissioner Lawson?
No.
Commissioner Withington?
Yeah, Chiefs are winning 10 to 0, but there's a big game this weekend, Notre Dame versus USC, so looking forward to bragging and to my two Southern California boys over there that Notre Dame's going to win, so.
Okay. Commissioner Carpenter?
Uh, no, no comments.
Commissioner Thompson? Commissioner Johnson?
No.
And I think it's late enough to where I have no comments either. So with that, we are adjourned. Thank you.